The time now is 6:07. Good evening and welcome everyone to October 28th Disability Issue Advisory Board Meeting. I am Stephanie Blackwell, your advisory board chair, and thank you all for joining us this evening. If you're not, if, for those who are unable to observe now, the meeting will be recorded and can be accessed through pgcps.org YouTube channel for later viewing. Ms. Vickery, can you, Ms. Vickery, can you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair. Board member Ajikaya.
Present.
Ms. Amaya. Chair Blackwell.
Present.
Mr. Blackson in Louisville, Trenell.
Present.
Ms. Byrne.
Present.
Ms. Dorsey.
Present.
Ms. Doyle.
Present.
Mr. Dwyer.
Present.
Ms. Cattrall. Ms. Torian Myers.
Present.
Board member Olivo.
Present.
Ms. Payne. Ms. Patrick. Vice Chair Smith.
Present.
Ms. Vickery, myself, I'm present. I'm Ms. Wingate Robinson. Chair and Vice Chair, we have present 11 advisory board members and absent 5.
Okay. Thank you. With a quorum present, the disability issue advisory board meeting will come to order. Um, I like to, adoption of October 28th meeting agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the notes in the minute, meeting, I mean, meeting minutes, I'm sorry. If there's no objection, the advisory board shall adopt the October 28th, 2025 meeting agenda. With no response, the minutes should be approved with any necessary corrections. So we disapprove the minutes. Approve of, approval of the minutes from approval of September 30th meeting minutes. If there's no corrections, the advisory board shall approve the September 30th, 2025 meeting, meeting minutes to as distributed. Okay, we're moving on. Just one second. Report of the Chair. Well, I'd like to take a moment to share that I would be stepping down as Chair of the Disability Issue Advisory Board effectively immediately. Serving in this role has truly been an honor, working alongside each of you. Advocates dedicate, dedicate, dedicated to advocating accessibility and inclusion and equality has been both inspiring and deeply meaningful. While I am stepping down from the Chair position, I remain fully, fully supportive and committed to the advisory board missions and confident that the important work we started will continue to move forward. I would like to thank all of you for your trust and collaboration and your passion. It's been a privilege to serve with you and I'm proud of what I have accomplished together. I will now turn over the meeting to the Vice Chair Theresa Smith, who will serve as the interim Chair of the Disability Advisory Board until a new Chairperson has been elected.
Well, good evening, everyone. Chair Blackwell, thank you so much for your vision, for your dedication. I think that you have been an invaluable contributor to this board, so um, I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with you as you serve as the District Representative, so thank you again. Are there any others that would like to say any words? All right, let's move into the subcommittee reports.
I'm sorry, Teresa, I had my hand up.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
Board member, Board Member Brown.
Yeah, I, I know I had already spoken to her about it and I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody has capabilities to mute. Cause I'm sure she's working in the background. We've all been there. No judgment. All right, uh, so I, I already said it in the beginning, um, before the, the meeting started, but I wanted to make sure I gave her her flowers uh, for this public hearing and wanted to make sure, uh, letting her know again that I appreciate all that she does. But more importantly, I appreciate the fact that, uh, she knows that the work is going to continue. Um, she is not afraid to be a agitator in this work. Uh, she is going to take it everywhere she has to take it and uh, I look forward to the continued partnership, um, wherever she goes, uh, moving forward and she even inspired me. Uh, because even not having her direct children specifically, um, in PGCPS anymore, because I didn't realize I could basically be her daughter. She looks so great, but anyways, um, you know, she still understands the importance of this work and she still understands what it means, uh, to advocate, to lead and to, to ensure services are done right and accountability is there. And so for that, I just want to make sure that I tell her, uh, thank you publicly and I appreciate and I look forward to continuing this work with her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brown. Are, I'm sorry, are there any others? All right, let's move forward to our subcommittee reports. Um. I'm so sorry, guys. One second, Akil. I'm, I'm waiting. I apologize, guys. Um. The interim Chair recognizes Brittany Patrick for the Board Policy 1700 Subcommittee. I do realize that Brittany is not present this evening. Is there another member from this subcommittee that would like to read out the report? And if not, I can, I can take it.
Um, Vice Chair Smith, I can, I'm happy to assist.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah.
Sure, of course. So this would be the Board Policy 1700 Committee update. Uh, our committee met to discuss next steps related to policy refinement. However, given that there has been no response from the Board regarding the committee's existing recommendations on Board Policy 1700, the committee would like to inquire whether a response should be expected. And as a sidebar to this, I believe August 30th was the initial requested in repeat documents for some sort of formal written feedback. And I believe it was asked again at our subsequent meeting. Uh, but resuming with Member Patrick's, uh, feedback here. If no response is forthcoming, the committee requests clarification from the Board Liaisons on the process for how recommendations from the Disability Issues Advisory Board are handled. Specifically, we would like to understand what occurs after recommendations are submitted, whether they are reviewed publicly or internally, and what the typical timeline for consideration looks like. Additionally, the committee requests that Board members confirm the date on which Board Policy 1700 is currently slated for review in the existing policy dashboard. I will say personally that my response here is, um, very restrained. We have been working as subcommittee members for months, have put in hours upon days to create, uh, what we took to be an understood based on questions asked and responses to those questions. A, a meaningful update and a meaningful document that we had hoped and still do hope with respect will be considered and, and given feedback or at a very bare minimum, some written explanation as to why, why there is such a delay. And at a minimum, some sort of window in which we can expect to receive responses because frankly, and I'm speaking in my own personal capacity at this juncture, my other board, my other pardon me, subcommittee members can chime in, but I am beyond frustrated with the lack of a response with questions posed and, uh, just if, if our time here is not to be productive or taken seriously, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Sarah. Um, and I believe even those outside of the subcommittee probably have the same sentiments. So thank you for sharing that heartfelt, um, feedback. I will pause and, um, ask if Board Member Brown, um, have any remarks in that regard. I know that the, the, um, Board initially requested a response by August 31st and then we were informed that we should have something, I think by this meeting. So I'll pause and see if you'd like to respond.
Thank you, Teresa. Yes. Um, I was, I, I believe I made it clear from the last meeting or the meeting prior to that, that today we would add the, uh, Chairman from the Policy and Governance Committee as well as invite Robin Welsh, um, who can kind of give some legislative insight, um, as far as the recommendations were concerned. So Dr. Moss, um, is willing to speak on the recommendations and the information. So yes, this was purposely set up for them to be able to speak today. I hope that helps.
I believe it does and we do, I'm looking at my agenda here. Um, Ms. Johnson, do we have Board Member Moss slated for item 7.0?
Yes, so both Board Member, Dr. Moss as well as Robin, uh, Welsh, they're both present this evening.
Okay, so for the subcommittee, Policy 1700, we'll just, um, I guess put a pin in it for now and we'll wait to agenda item 7.0, um, to get additional feedback, um, regarding the concerns. So we will now move over to item 6.2, new school construction.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Moss does have his hand raised at this time, but I think we also need to acknowledge that we have, um, additional attendees before we proceed.
Okay, so I think the first.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
So I think the first thing, let's acknowledge the additional individuals we have present in our meeting tonight, and that is Board Member Moss as well as Robin Welsh. Do they need to say anything? Do they need to say anything, Ms. Vickery?
Well, it's just a, a brief introduction and we also have a Mr. McElroy as well. Um, so if we can start with Board Member Moss, just for, for, and then, Mr. McElroy, thank you.
Yeah, um, Felton Moss, Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, represent District 7 here tonight to provide some clarity around where we are and how recommendations get to the Board. Um, and also my thoughts on the recommendations you've already made. Um, so yeah, good to see you all tonight.
Ms. Welsh.
Good evening. Um, I'm Robin Welsh. I'm the Director of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures, and I actually am the staff person who is assigned to the Policy and Governance Committee and work very closely with that committee on developing policies. And I, I too thought that I was invited to talk about how the policy, uh, is, the recommendations for changes in a policy are made and that whole process, um, you know, and acknowledge that you did, you know, provide some suggestions and that we are definitely looking at them. But as far as an individual cannot speak for the committee, but certainly will share the process so that everyone understands.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes, good evening, Ryan McElroy. Um, it's okay, um, uh, you can call me Mac, everyone. Um, I'm actually the new community liaison. Uh, I'll be working with District 1, 2, and 3. Um, actually under Cindy at the moment, right now. And, uh, I'm here and thank you to Tia. Um, she actually provided all the information just so I can, um, just see everything, just get acquainted, um, seeing how things are going, um, and just learning and just be able to get my feet wet and just become a sponge with everything. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we welcome all three of you all to our meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Maybe tapping you guys shortly here. All right, so continuing with our agenda, item 6.2 is new construction and accessibility of buildings and facilities. I note that Trenell is not here this evening, so Mr. Blackston, I would like to recognize you if there is, um, any updates you would like to share for this subcommittee.
I do not have any updates for this particular subcommittee, um, um, at this particular time from Mrs. Bowman.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vickery?
I think, um, our last meeting or two meetings ago, there might have been a question about, um, a follow-up on some outstanding things. Unfortunately, I'd have to pull those meeting minutes, um, to find out. But I, I do believe we had a takeaway, Mr. Blackson, and I was hoping that you would have had a date, but I will um, gather that, that information and I'll, I'll circle back later in new business if that's okay, Chair.
Yes, that's fine. Thanks. All right, employment and hiring, the interim Chair recognizes the new school. Uh, that's not written correctly, I'm sorry. So employment and hiring, the Chair recognizes the employment and hiring Chair, which is Ms. Janey, and unfortunately, she is not here this evening. Understanding, Ms. Blackwell, you will be providing a status update?
Um, yes, I, uh, well, uh, we don't have any update as, at the moment, but she wants to make a point of to see who's on that committee. How many members we have on that committee? Who's been appointed? The names that have been appointed to that committee. That's what you want to know.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Blackwell. So it is my understanding that this particular subcommittee, um, the number of members that are currently on this subcommittee causes us to have a quorum for the entire Board. So we would like to know if there are any members that are willing to move over to another subcommittee. Ms. Johnson, I see your hand.
Yes, um, so I'm so sorry, and I meant to, thought I had sent the email to both of you. Um, it appears that there isn't, um, a quorum because my understanding, I think it was decided that maybe Ari is going to another subcommittee? And so with her leaving, it should take the number down to eight.
I'm going to chop your name up and I'm sorry, maybe offline, you can give me the fanatic sign of your name. But the student board member, I do recognize you now.
Thank you. Um, I want to say I'm not part of any subcommittee as of right now. I don't think I was added to one. Um, I, I believe like information was supposed to be shared about which sub, like what each subcommittee does. So I can like, I guess, join one, but I haven't received that yet. So currently I'm not on any subcommittee yet.
Ms. Johnson or Ms. Vickery, could you guys confirm if the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee um, had an issue with just one additional person?
It would have, it would, it would have a problem with one additional person, but as Board Member Ajikaya said, she, she had not, um, she had not been appointed or anything. She was invited to learn more about the subcommittees. Um, I'm not sure how information hasn't been shared, but we could follow up on that later. Uh, but she had, uh, that, um, that just happened at the last meeting on the 30th of September. I'm sorry, I have like all the notes open on all the screens over here. So she, she had not, uh, but we have eight there ready.
Okay, so Ms. Blackwell, I believe that we can, we can, we can, um, provide feedback to the subcommittee offline. It, it appears right now there is not a concern as it relates to quorum. Um, if, if it should surface, uh, we can definitely address it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Um, Vice Chair, um, Smith, if I could just interject. So as of right now, um, Ms. Blackwell is no longer, um, in a position of leadership, so I, we would have to just, uh, to defer to yourself for, for the time being and whoever will be the, the next Chair. Just a point of reference.
Absolutely. Um, I only addressed her because she was sitting there for Ms. Janey.
Got it. Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm just, okay, I see what you're saying. I see exactly what you're saying. Okay.
Okay. All right. Our next agenda item is related to the election for new Chair, item 7.1. Pursuant to Board Policy 1700, the Disability Issues Advisory Board is required to elect a Chair to serve as a two-year term. As of this evening, the Chair position is currently vacant and we will be holding a vote to fill this position tonight. With that said, I have decided to step down from my role as Vice Chair and to self-nominate for the position of Chair. I'd like to now open the floor for additional nominees. Ms. Vickery will keep a tally of the nominees. Are there any other members who wish to nominate themselves or another member for Chair? All right, it appears that there are no further names being issued. Ms. Johnson, I need some clarity. Uh, let me, before I ask my question, Ms. Taran Myers?
I had a question of clarity. Um. How does the nomination process work? You just self-nominated and you're asking if anybody else wants to self-nominate?
Yes, that's the current question on the floor.
I mean, I'm willing to nominate myself for Vice Chair.
Okay, so I think there is another point in here about Vice Chair.
Yes, it is, and I'm sorry if I may just interject. Oh, um, I'm going to defer to, to Cindy. She has her hand up. She may be able to provide some further guidance.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so we'll have to close off the vote for the Chair first and then put the vote for the Vice Chair on the floor.
Okay, great. Um, Ms. Johnson, the question, or maybe Cindy, the question that I was going to ask, if there are no other nominees, do I need to, um, provide a speech as to why I believe that I would be a good fit?
Since you're the only one, it's pretty much as you're, at your discretion, um, because like I said, you're the only one. So you could, or you really don't have to, it's up to you.
Okay. Are there, let me ask the, the Board, are there any objections? Or is there a position of the members as to whether or not you would like to hear from me this evening or should we move towards the vote? Right, Karen, uh, Ms. Vickery, could you please take the vote?
All right, I couldn't find the screen for a second. All right, I am ready. Ms. Amaya. Or Member Ajikaya.
Aye.
Ms. Blackwell.
Aye.
Mr. Blackson.
Aye.
Ms. Byrne.
Aye.
Ms. Dorsey. Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Ms. Cattrall. Ms. Torian Myers.
Aye.
Ms. Patrick. Ms. Payne. Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Vickery.
Aye.
I'm Ms. Wingate Robinson. I was just confirming who was at it. Just making sure of it. Off the count. We have total of, uh, 10, no affirmative, and we have total of five absent. Um, the vote carries, no affirmative.
Thank you all for your support in this this evening. We will now move forward, well, I have been selected as the Chair of the Disability Advisory Board, Disability Issues Advisory Board. We will now move forward to nominations for Vice Chair. Pursuant to Board Policy 1700, the Disability Issues Advisory Board is required to elect a Vice Chair to serve a two-year term. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations. Ms. Vickery will keep a tally of nominees. Are there any members who wish to nominate themselves or another member for Vice Chair? Ms. Taran Myers, we, we have you as a candidate. Are there any others? Karen Nan.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was trying to make sure I saved the document correctly. Um, fortunately, I would, I would like to nominate Ms. Patrick, but she's not here this evening. Um, so I would like to nominate Ms. Patrick. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Adely. How do we proceed with that?
Cindy, I want to defer to you about nominating, um, a member who isn't present. Is that, um, permit, permitted? Does that fall within policy? Uh-oh, she's still here?
She is.
Sorry, uh. So it looks like presence is not required to be elected, so I'm guessing she can be put on the vote, on the, yeah. In the ballot.
Okay, so we have two nominations for Vice Chair. That is Brittany Patrick and then is it Tangela Taran Myers?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. So Ms. Vickery. Can you please take the votes?
No, I need one second. So sorry.
Sure.
Excuse me, Chair, um, Smith, if I could just, um, interject for a minute. So being that there's two nominees, and we could just clarify which nominee is being voted on, and then for the second one, for the record.
Okay, great. I will restate that. Um. Ms. Taran Myers.
So, yeah, so. I guess because there are two of us. I know when you nominated yourself, you mentioned, um, that you have to make a speech. There are two of us and she's not here. So is it possible to delay this until the next meeting when she may be available? So that if we have to, no?
Yes, that's actually an excellent question. Um, Cindy, could you give some feedback here?
So looking at Robber's Rules, it says that, um, a candidate, a candidate can still be nominated and elected even if not present. However, the can, the candidate must provide consent that they wish to run for the position. So we need to get her consent right now on record.
We, could we delay that? I know that we can't proceed unless we have a chair in place, but can we proceed without a Vice Chair in place?
Yes, because the Vice Chair is only, um. Is only in place when the chair is absent.
Okay, um. I'd like to move that we table the election for our Vice Chair until our next meeting.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we chair the, we chair the position for, the nomination for Vice Chair until our next meeting. Are there any objections? Karen Nan, the motion passes. Ms. Doyle, I see your hand.
I, I, uh, I texted her, so if I hear back from her, I can also let the group know and see if she consents to that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Doyle. All right, so the moment we have been waiting for this, oh. Let me hold on a second, Cindy, I see your hand.
Thanks. Um, I know my parliamentarian will be upset if I don't address this. So right now, we need to postpone the votes rather than table, because if we table, that means we have to get it done within that same meeting, just at a later time. But if we're postponing to another, we need to postpone to another meeting because we're choosing another date and time.
Okay, Ms. Vickery, could you?
I'd like to amend my motion.
Yes, thank you.
And postpone the vote for a Vice Chair until our next, uh, scheduled meeting, which I believe is.
Is there a second?
Eighteenth.
Or do we need a second since it's amended?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded that we postpone the vote for Vice Chair until our next scheduled meeting. Are there any objections? Is there any discussion? Forgot to do that the last time. Here and none. Thank you all. All right, so the main, um, thing that we have been waiting for is item seven point two, the Recommendations Report. The Chair will now recognize Dalton, Dr. Felton Mall's Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee and Ms. Robin Welsh, Director of the Office of Government Relations, Compliance and Procedures for the presentation of the Recommendations Report requested by the Disability Issues Advisory Board.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Um, I'll let Robin clean up what I mess up because she's the expert. Um, for sure. But it's good to be here with you all. And let me say something. Um, I hear your frustrations. I hear. Um, you want to get this done. Um, that's important and the board appreciates your work and your advocacy around this. Let me name that first. Uh, let me walk back just a little bit so you're clear. Uh, typically when the board advances, your report was not just a policy report. Your report had recommendations for the system. Your rec, your report had recommendations for policy. And so there was no, you know, such way, you know, to, you know, be able to address all that and say, we're going to do this. Um, I, I don't get to do that as the Chair of this committee and say, we're going to take your and adopt your ideas. That just doesn't happen in that way. I do think the board, and I went back in my email to see if I replied and said, you know, acknowledge receipt of your report, but I do believe we acknowledge receipt of it and um, your, your folks, but I, I've got to tell you, you issued a report in the latter half of the academic year when we were headed out and you had a deadline for us in August when the board is actually on recess. And so, uh, you, you imposed the deadline on us that we did not meet. I acknowledge that. Um, but to be able to respond to all the things in your document, uh, honestly, uh, as a Chair, it's not in my right to do. Now, let me say this and Robin can talk to you a little bit about this and I can tell you my thoughts on the policy. Policy in PGCPS doesn't get made overnight. It dearly takes about a year for policy to get made. So even if you made recommendations in May, I still wouldn't be able to tell you probably until the next May where that is. I mean, the, the committee reviews it, gives feedback on it, goes out for public comments, which is generally where we get the kind of feedback that you've sent us. Now, we do accept, you know, reports from our acting committees. We've got this going on with PCAC. But our policymaking process is, is long and, and I wish I could make it shorter. I'll be honest with you. I wish I could vote and make our policy process a bit, you know, shorter than what it is. So when we get recommendations from you about a policy, we don't act on it day one. And, and Robin can talk about this a little bit more. Each year we have a set of policies that we vote on called a work plan that we work through. So we actually did move on your request, uh, at the end of the year. So we moved on your request by putting Policy seventeen hundred on the agenda for this year. So had you not requested in your report for seventeen hundred to be on the agenda, we wouldn't even be talking about it this year in our upcoming meetings. Because we have so many policies, we have to decide which ones we're going to review each year. So this year it's seventeen hundred and that was at your request. We knew you had some feedback. What happens in that process is the administration has to look at it, make some recommendations to the board even before it comes to the committee, uh, and before the larger board. So yes, it's been since June when you made your recommendations. But I don't think I have this slated until November. Uh, I think it's at the November meeting where we have this slated to even begin the discussion of talking about. And I want to manage expectations a bit and tell you that it may be discussed in November, but it probably won't go out for public comment until March or something. I mean, that's just got to be real with you, given the timeline. Um, and so I, I want to just help you understand that you actually did have movement. People don't email us every day and get policies on the agenda because the district has hundreds of them. So you are actually one of thirteen policies this year that we're going to review. Uh, because you made a request for us to do that. So you've actually made a lot of progress. You've, you've opened the, the shop. The second thing that I want to go over is in terms of, you know, we've got to be really careful here, um, because you all are make, you all, your recommendations are substantive in that it would change the scope of work. Some of your recommendations are substantive in that it would change the work. That's ultimately up to the Policy and Governance Committee if they take those substantive changes. Um, and we will debate that in our upcoming meeting. This document will go to the full committee. I can't tell you positionally where my colleagues stand on making some of these changes. Um, but I'll let Robin come in in a moment. I'm sure she'll talk to you about the difference between CCAC and and Disabilities Advisory, but she's going to tell you the same thing. She works at the will and pleasure of the committee uh, in terms of what changes we want to make to a policy. Now, at the end of your document, you made some recommendations that are not policy oriented, that are not bored. I would say that those recommendations, um, are administrative and they would be administrative procedures. And so the administration would need time to look over those and to get back to you at the end of your document. Um, I think high level, that's just kind of what I want to lay out. I'm happy to talk more about this, but you've actually made substantial progress. You got this on the board's docket in a world where we get requested to view policies every week and month. Um, and so I've gone through your document. I know where I stand on some of these items. The committee will have to weigh in on some of their work. Um, but I, I think that, um. Those are my comments. Robin, I'm going to turn it over to you and, um, you could lay out the full process if you want to or clean up whatever mess I've made.
No, I, I think you gave a lot of clarity and I want to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule, of course, as well as, uh, Ms. Robin Welsh. And I know you got to make sure you say Robin Brown or Robin Welsh because we got to make sure we know who, who you're addressing. But, and I'm sure, uh, Robin Welsh will address this, but, um, what I also when giving the recommendations, I also wanted, uh, the Chairman, so Dr. Moss, um, as well as Ms. Welsh to understand if we can really make sure that we clarify the distinct differences between DIAB and CCAC. Um, we want to make sure that, because CCAC is approved by the General Assembly, okay? It is regulated by the state of Maryland and requires each school district to maintain. Um, however, there is no regulation when it comes to, um, DIAB per se, but we know that the work needs to be done. We know this is another opportunity where we can fill in the gaps where possibly CCAC might miss. Uh, we're able to have that opportunity to fill in any additional gaps, but I do want to give, um, because it probably was Robin Welsh that you probably wanted to call upon her the opportunity to speak as well. So thank you.
No, I was going to get to Robin Welsh, but I wanted you, I know we've talked about this several times and um, Robin Brown was going to make sure that I was here and doing my homework and my assignment. So I wanted her to clean up anything that I messed up. But I think Ms. Welsh can also fill in gaps in terms of the policymaking process. And after that, I do want to say something about two of the items in your recommendations.
Um, so I would have to say, first of all, Dr. Moss, I think you did an excellent job in explaining the process because I would have said the very same thing you said, that the process is lengthy and of course, I do work at the pleasure of the committee and, um, certainly provide recommendations from administration on many of the policies that we discuss, but ultimately it is the committee's decision what that, what, what that final policy is going to look like. Now, saying that, from there, then it does go to public comment and the po, the committee then comes back and looks at all that public comment and many times makes revisions to policies based on public comment. And then once they have it finally, the way they like to have it, then they take it to the full board and then the full board considers it and then votes on it. And there have been times where the full board at the very last step ends up making revisions to the policy also. So it goes through many reviews before it's finalized and it does take practically an entire year to get a policy through the review process. But I also want to point out that Dr. Moss did actually, um, I think say it in one of our meetings and actually call me and say, make sure this gets on the work list for this particular policy, because this was an important policy that we, that he knew you all wanted to have for this coming year. So that is why we are going to be addressing it at the November eleventh meeting. I have, I did, and I too, when I first read this, the entire thing, I was like, oh my gosh, what is all these things that they, they want to place into a policy? And I kept reading it. And then I saw the word subcommittee and I was like, oh, oh, I think these are other things that are not meant for the policy. So, so I was a little confused at first too, when I read through it. I have had conversation with the administration, some of the items that you have, um, presented for policy consideration and certainly will be, be bringing that up for the committee also as they review all the things that you have shared and what the administration thinks about that. So I, I, I'm very excited because I think that just that the, the, I don't know how you call yourselves DIAB or just the Disabilities Advisory Committee, but I think that you all, um, are going to play an essential role and have been playing an essential role. And I think both between you and CSAC, both groups can work very hard and to ensure that our students are getting, our students with disabilities are getting what they deserve. Uh, just as a little aside, I used to be the Director of Special Education for Calver County. So my heart always goes out to, to, for students with disabilities and I am a strong advocate for them. So I feel like this is, this is great. And we're very excited that you're so, uh, so involved and so committed and, and willing to provide us the public comment, all, all the comments that Jim provided us.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And for the balance of my time, I would like to hear, um, the rationale just a little bit, if, if Ms. Ms. Robin Brown, if this is okay. Cause I know you and Amy are, are the, you know, the committee folks here. Um, but I would like to hear the rationale around the expanded board scope. Because, I mean, just to be transparent with you all, you know, from a legal perspective, I do worry about this request to move into IDEA in five oh four. But you know, when somebody wants to change like that, it also signals to me that something isn't working. And so I think that's where that's coming from. And so I'd love to hear more about that because while it worries me in this policy, it sounds like it might have implications elsewhere. And so when I know this is a change that you all want, um, and it's a big change for you all, so I would love to hear if this is, Ms. Teresa, you're the Chair here. So if it's appropriate for me to hear the why behind that, I'd love to hear it because you did give a rationale in your recommendations. And it was, it was not very, it wasn't very, um, extended. It was a short rationale. I'd love to hear a larger one because honestly, outside of this, I won't have another time to address this other than you all putting it in public comment, because that's kind of how this works. So if it's Ms. Teresa's okay with that, I'm going to get in trouble calling her Ms. Teresa. She just looks at me every time I call her Ms. Teresa. But if Ms. Teresa's okay with that, um, I'd love to hear the rationale. But I think you all have some great recommendations in here. I can't tell you which ones I, I'm really excited about, but I think there's some really great ones that I can get on board with, but, but this one does beg more information from me. And I'm not the only leader here. I just want to say this. Amy is the Vice Chair of Policy and Governance. So, um, you know, e, even on this item, she might even be leading it. You never know which one of us is leading an item. So um, I just want y'all to know that you actually have the Vice Chair on your, in your group too. So if, if you need something, uh, Amy is certainly available.
So I know that our subcommittee chair is not here this evening. But I don't know if it would be premature for us to give a rationale because I personally don't want to call out a specific statute. I know within that committee is not just IDEA. We had a long list of statutes that cover people with disabilities and this particular policy only addresses ADA and there actually was not any historical information on the thought process there. So as a subcommittee reconsidered all possible statutes that would impact a person with a disability. And of course IDEA came underneath there. Um, there was a conversation that was had with CCAC because there was some, um, some concerns raised within the community specifically to IDEA. There may be overlap just as well with Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. So I think it warrants an in-depth discussion versus us, you know, having a snap discussion here this evening. So I did just want to preference it by saying that the subcommittee um, considered all of the statutes.
That's, that's super, that's super helpful, Ms. Teresa, in that one, I'll tell you personally, I highlighted everything after IDEA and five oh four and said, all of these other statues make sense to be here. Just so you know, like electronic and information technology to five oh eight when the physical accessibility, hiring, hiring is already in your committee charge. Um, but it's around Title One ADA, five oh three, um, seclusion and restraint. I get it. Um, it's a, it, it moves over into IDA. So I literally had in green, all of this should be here, but in red, I had IDEA, just giving you my thought process. But if you're not willing to do that today, I would encourage you all not to ask you to do another document because I can pick up the phone and call Brittany. She represents District Seven and lives two blocks from me. So I can call her and hear her rationale. But I think the committee and, and you know, Board Member Olivo, Board Member Brown, because this is such a substantive change, I do think it would benefit the full committee for us to get more information around why you all want this, um, as part of your work. And your initial rationale is perfect, Ms. Teresa. Um, but I see a bunch of hands coming up, so I'll stop talking.
Okay, um, I'm going to recognize the other hands, but Mr. Moss, I do want to come back, um, after we wrap up this round here, um, because I have some feedback, um, as it relates to some of the comments that was made in your presentation. Ms. Doyle.
Chair, Chair, Chair Smith, I'm sorry. Ms. Welsh had her hand up first, but I see she removed it. So I'm not sure if she wants to pause and, and come back.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I never took it down, I think. So I'm sorry.
No problem. Ms. Doyle.
Hi, thank you. Um, Dr. Moss, thanks for the explanation and, um, I heard you say that this change was interesting to you because it, you know, it seemed beyond our scope, but then it's indicative that maybe something isn't working, right? And I think we are all, almost all of us here are here because special education is not working in Prince George's County. Most of us are parents of children with disabilities, many staff members who work with disabled students. So I, I'm not trying to like be, you know, snippy or sarcastic, but like we're here because it's, it's bad out there. Um, I, I'm like the one person in this county who's happy with their, one of their kids' special education services. I know people who have moved out of county because the services, because special education is in such poor shape here. And you know, we're under, um, observation from the state. So, um, again, not trying to be, not trying to be sarcastic to you, but we're here because things aren't working well. And, um, we're hoping to do our piece to improve things.
Thank you for that, Ms. Doyle. Ms. Vickery.
I would like to echo, um, Chair Smith's statement around the lack of information that was housed for DIAB prior to, and, um, us all coming aboard. There just seemed to be, uh, just, there was no documents. There's nothing anywhere and like nothing. Um, and so to ask us to bring forth recommendations and yet the one, the policy itself is like three lives long. Then two, to say, bring forth recommendations, but not consider all of these things when all of these things literally touch each other. For very colloquial saying, it was diabolical and insane to do that. Um, so, I can't speak for an entire advisory board, but I can speak for myself in saying that we needed to have those additional um, things viewed is important because literally every single thing touches each other. And, and without considering that you're just standing up another advisory board to do the same thing that whatever the previous one did, because there is no record of what was done. Um, and so we want to make sure that we build a, a great record and stuff that the board and the administrative staff can work from. Um, and if you guys are not going to consider all of those things, then it's pointless. You're not going to be able to actually make effective change.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. Ms. Byrne.
Hey there. Um, and I know, uh, my face has like a caption on it. I'm, I'm doing my best, but, um, we're just beyond exasperated and I respect that everybody here has another job to do, but, um, as has been said, you're also talking about families who have students within PGCPs in special education. And the rate at which this committee seems to be moving is just, uh, molasses is just the word that's coming to mind, but, um, and so, uh, Dr. Moss, I appreciate the inquiry today into, you know, why is IDEA in there and 504? And you know, versus just the ADA, totally appreciate that inquiry. However, we, we've been asking about that since last September. And we've been coming to these meetings and there have been representatives from the board, including yourself. When we've asked these and we've honestly, it feels like we've just been tabled. Um, and so it's coming to the point for many of us where we're like, is this, why was this board convened in, in the first place? And should we continue doing this when we seem to be chasing our tails? And being an attorney, having worked in the United Legislature, I'm very familiar with regulations versus policy, et cetera. Had that guidance been a part of our conversation, September, October, November, December, January, that would have been really helpful. I welcome that. I welcome more of that. Moving forward, I would like to stay and I would like for this, for DIAB to be as robust and helpful to the PGCPs Board of Education as possible. I mean, how much better does it get? You've got folks with kids actually in the system, like, but, um, you know, the, the kind of the notion that we need to be patient when there are questions that on our end seem very basic. What is the purpose of this committee? What happens when the, with the recommendations? I just hope you see where I at least personally am coming from.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Ms. Taran Myers, if you just give me one second and Dr. Moss, because I think this is a good segue for me. I feel that we are hyper-focused on the recommendations, the recommendations for Board Policy 1700 versus the entire recommendations report that also include things that do not touch Board Policy 1700. And Dr. Moss, I'mma just have to be frank with you. The chairs, as well as Ms. Olivia, had a meeting with the administration, the current administration, and they were not even aware of the recommendations report. And this was well after August. So this particular board has done a lot of work and to Sarah's point, we are feeling like our work is laying dormant. So I do, I think we all understand that there is a process in place to make changes to a policy. We get that. But when it comes to a recommendations report that we were required to provide to the Board of Education, it's not fair to us that we are serving this district and we're not getting any feedback from that. So it would be helpful if we, and at a minimum, we get some responses to the recommendation, to the, to the recommendations report in general. I understand if your response is for the recommendations related to the policy itself is that we go through the policy process, that's a response. But for all of the other recommendations to just sit there and we don't have nothing and now it's almost the end of October is concerning. So I wanted to pause and say that. And then let me just recognize, um, Ms. Taran Myers and then Dr. Moss.
Be quick. Um, and what, and what we all hearing is the, the passion that we all have, right? Because we all have children, um, that are in this school system and we see the failures. We also recognize that it's bigger than just the kids. Some of the educators also need our support and we're, you know, aligning ourselves with that. And to what Ms. Vickery stated, this board was dormant for a while and now it's coming back and times have changed. This particular session of people are trying to lay the foundation for what we look like going forward. So we're not so constrained as things change and evolve, right? I understand CCAC and their legislative need and how they are listed, but we are still having a significant problem in this school system, who is really not underfunded. I, I mean, that's one of the things they don't like to talk about, that they are short-staffed. There are schools in, in, in this county that are fully staffed and we're still seeing the same systemic issues. So we want our policy to allow us to advise the school board on a systemic issues and a path forward on how we make that change. And since there is no documentation about what happened the last time, we're going to create that documentation. But we need to start from a place where we have some sort of power to make that change. So I understand, like, you know, Ms. Smith said, the, the policy, the procedures, all that good stuff. But even before we asked the question, our school board should be asking the question about what was this board's purpose? And why did it lay dormant? And now that we're all here, help us to transition it so that it is effective and it's meaningful. And people are taking the time out to do this. Right? We all have jobs except in furlough, so I got more time right now, but we all have jobs to do. And so this is, this is our time to try to help our school system, which we now know really needs help. That's all I'm going to say.
Ms. Teresa, is it okay for me to respond?
Could we take Ms. Doyle real quick and then, then allow you to respond? I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Doyle.
Thanks. Um, I would just, just to like put an end cap on all of this a bit, it sometimes feels like this board was convened to like feel good, make the board look good, make, but like, no one actually wanted us to do anything. And again, most of us are parents of kids with extra needs and I don't, like, we don't have that kind of time. Um, so just really appreciate your response. And again, a lot of this information would have been so useful a month ago.
Ms. Vickery, do you mind if I allow Mr. Moss to go? All right, thanks.
Yeah, so, no, Ms. Teresa, you know, I don't care. You're good. Um, so let me say this. Um, one, I appreciate the feedback tonight. It's super helpful in our work. Um, and we only get better as a board when we have feedback. But I want to put two things in perspective, uh, for you all. Not that I'm excuse-making, but the board members that you have on this call started in January, technically, uh, and were appointed. And Amy started in three days ago, almost. It probably feels like four years, but, um, I became Chair of Policy and Governance in January and I was at a gas station and was in trouble because I hadn't returned Ms. Teresa's call, which is why I ended up coming to the meeting in March when I came. Um, and it was Robin Brown who had me to come to the meeting. And at that meeting, I explained to you all how to get policy change to happen. I think I was at another meeting or something. So I've only been here once, so I'm not making excuses. And I share with you all how to get policy change to happen. And three months later, we made it happen. So I get your frustration and we take ownership for the board that was before us. I, I totally get it. If they weren't responsive, you all are talking about September, October, November. I was running for office during that time. Uh, Robin was too, and Amy had no clue she would be on the board at that time. So I'm not making an excuse in that regard. Secondarily, the meeting that you all had this year was with a completely different administration. And that was with, um, I believe you had a meeting with Dr. Collins and Superintendent Joseph, who wouldn't have had, wouldn't have had any awareness around any recommendations that you all have made. Now let me own this. We as a board should have sent you all a memo and said, we receive your recommendations. We will take time to review them. That is on us. We should have done that. I took your recommendations and put it into action and did not follow up with you and you learned about it today. So I can own the fact that perhaps, and we've got Cindy on the phone now. Cindy, we, we should just make a conscious effort that when we get these recommendations report, we lay out the process for you all. I think the board could have done a better job on that. I will name as the Chair of Policy and Governance so long I'm here. I'm happy to take, you know, walk with you all on this journey to get this done. But let me say something that's not going to be kind. And since I've been so honest with you all tonight, I hope you all will give me permission to be unkind for a moment. And it's not even my own unkindness. Um, but Brene Brown says, to be clearest, to be kind, to be unclearst, to be unkind. When DIAB was started, I did my research. The intent was for you all to make sure school buildings were compliant with ADA. Nothing more, nothing less. Over time, this committee has been dormant and didn't even take on that charge. And so it was not until we got people who cared about this, and I'm not, let me, let me say that carefully. Well, even that the other folks didn't care about it, but there's a level of passion because you all feel this and you're just workers. I mean, I mean, you, you literally want to see the system change. And so you onboarded a whole group of new board members who still have questions themselves about what does it mean for this group? I'm just being real with you all. And I had to do research to figure out why this was started. There is no manual to say why, you know, 15 years ago, they put together this committee. So let's be honest on the forefront of what, what I've learned and what we're working through. This committee was started to ensure buildings were ADA compliant. That was the sole purpose when the, when the board came up with this committee. Nothing more, nothing less. Since then, the state has required us to have a hyper-focus on students with disabilities and CCAC came about as law. And so they are responsible for many of the tasks that you all are asking us, um, to do. But I, I just wanted to be honest with you all. And I'm sure someone else has said that to you, but my research. And so that's what I came up with. In summary, we weren't here. The administration wasn't here. I came and told you all what a process needs to look like. Number three, we should have responded and sent you a memo. That's just good business. We weren't good on that part and said, we should have sent you a memo and said, we're prioritizing it. We're making it a policy. I did the work. I just didn't communicate doing the work and I can own that and do better the next time. But we're not at odds on moving this work forward. I have the same concerns that you all have. My first item as a board member was an audit of special education and they asked me to pull it back. So you, you should know that we're not misaligned in, in our, in our quest for improving outcomes for students with disabilities. I hope I answered your question. It didn't sound like I was an excuse-making, but I, I'm going to always give it to you 10,000. But Ms. Teresa called me back in March because I hadn't returned her phone call and was like, you need to be at this meeting so we can get clear about this, in her nice way. And so then we came and figured out how to do this. Um, but that's just what I want to lay out. Hopefully that provided some clarity.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Ms. Vickery.
I'm sorry. I, I have been a party to one of those nice way email, uh, phone calls.
I should give you credit for your, for your phone calls to me too, so.
But, um, I would say, um, thank you for at least giving us some history. I don't think we've ever had that. I will, um, aside from DIAB, I would, I would, um, implore you and encourage your team to look at some of those, um, ADA policies you guys are pointing towards. Policies that don't exist anymore. In Comar, in PGCPs, you have lines that say, we'll follow PG County rule that says blah, 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 blah. And PG County rule does not exist anymore. It has not existed in 10 years. You have several of those. Um, so it's good to know that. It's good to know that we're not misaligned. But it would be great if we could also, um, get some of our questions answered. Some of our subcommittees have not been able to move forward on work because we have outstanding questions that we have put to the board and to the administrative staff that we have not followed, we've not gotten forward. And again, if our charge is to make these recommendations, make these reports, we can't go forward if we don't have the data. And a lot of the times are being told, oh, you're going to get it. You're going to get it. And then nothing happens.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. Ms. Doyle.
Thank you, Dr. Moss, for that history because I had no idea that that's why this was convened. And honest, I was just trying to look in my Google Docs, but I'm 90% full and, uh, had to do some cleaning, so I can't find it. But, um, the answers that I gave when I applied for the answers that I gave when I applied for this board, and it was pretty extensive about like, you know, talking about my experience about, you know, having disabilities in PG CPS school system and how was I as a collaborator? And it, it looked nothing like what you just described. So, um, I think there's like a fundamental mismatch going on here. Um, that, so that is, that is very interesting and I um, I think we need to be making sure that people are getting to do kind of what they signed up to do, right? Um, I had something else and it's gone, but that's, that, that's what I got for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Doyle. And I think a lot of us echo what you just stated there as well. Ms. Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. And, you know, thank you so much. It's, you, what I can say is, it's folks like you all constituents state, because you guys are legitimate stakeholders in the work that we do. And so without your input, nothing is going, nothing can change because we wouldn't know. Um, and so I want to make sure, um, that we don't think it's in vain because we're talking in January and we don't hear anything till now. I myself, and I know Amy for sure, and Ari, we're still working in the background to make sure things are not forgotten. And so one of the commitments as a board member that I made to myself was because of everything going on with special education, um, from the last business meeting, I specifically asked about recruiting and retention when it came to HR and what that looks like for our special education. And so that w- going into our meetings, I'm making sure, you know what, I'm gonna make sure I ask something about special education that was discussed in DIAB. So you all don't feel like nothing is being heard, nobody's hearing what is, what we're saying. No. What you all are bringing to me, I'm still bringing out on a consistent basis. And so please know that even if it's not heard on a big stage or wherever you think it's, it's being heard. Um, no one is neglecting this topic. I also wanted to bring up, I know, um, someone had brought up uh, the investigation. I think that's something that's more so Trinell's office. She can probably give a little bit more context for that. That's context we need as board members. Um, obviously, we would love to have access to that whenever the information is given, but I want to make sure we know who would be the subject matter experts when it comes to dealing with these specific issues.
Thanks, Board Member Brown. Ms. Taran Myers?
So, um, a- and I too appreciate the information from Dr. Moss. Um, but, you know, based on what you're telling us, um, we are sort of in a holding pattern, right? People have invested a lot of time, um, in trying to update, you know, Board seventeen hundred policy, and that hasn't changed yet. And so our, technically, our main date is to, uh, make sure school buildings that, that, that they are ADA compliant. Though that's the only thing that we can really do and change right now. But the broader scope that we're trying to, uh, involve ourselves in, we technically don't have the ability to do that. And so I guess my question is, when will we have that feedback that tells us if our policy is going to be changed so that we can continue to move forward? Because like many of us, we, we joined this board because we know that change had to happen, we needed it to happen, and it wasn't happening. Um, and it's not just our thoughts about it, right? The report that was mentioned was about PGCF, PG CPS failure to support children, uh, with individualized education plans in a way that's effective. Um, so I, I need clarity on what are we at this moment? And how long do we have to stay just making sure school buildings are compliant with ADA? Before we can move on, like, what's that timeframe?
Ms. Taran Myers, if I may, the way board policy seventeen hundred is currently written, we have an additional charge and it's related to employment and hiring. So as it relates to like, one of our recommendations is dealing with, um, the accommodation review process. Um, so I don't think that has left our authority per se. Um, so two things, the facilities, new facilities, new construction in facilities as well as, well, new construction and accessibility of buildings and facilities and then employment and hiring. So, I don't know if this question is for Board Member Moss or if it's actually for Board Member Brown. Do you have any immediate comment to how we move forward? Because I know Ms. Byrne brought this up in our last meeting, and I think I had mentioned, we can consider some of the legislative things, um, that's on the table right now for the district, but in light of knowing what our scope is, how do we, how do we move forward?
Can, can I give a recommendation here?
Sure.
So my recommendation was that actually your second scope that was added, I can't tell you what year that that was added, but your second scope, I think, is actually one of the most powerful pieces of this work and where an opportunity exists. PG CPS just underwent contracting for individuals to support our students with disabilities. Um, and we do have some gaps. And I think some of your recommendations in your report actually address some of that, right? Um, you know, those, um, cert, those assistance that need to be paired with students. So I think there are a lot of opportunities for you all to lean in and perhaps on that front, working with, um, you know, Trinell Bowman and team to ensure that our staffing plan that is embedded in our corrective action plan from MSDE is actually one that addresses a lot of concerns. I can tell you seventy percent of the concerns that I hear that are related to students with disabilities are staffing issues. At the end of the day, they, I can drive it back down to not having a certified educator to be able to work with a student who needs a speech pa- speech and language pathologist, any of that. So in terms of delivering on your committee's charge, I would develop a work plan focused on staffing. Um, until this board policy, until the board decides what it's gonna do on policy. Secondly, I do think there are some opportunities with buildings that are not ADA compliant for, for our students. There is a tremendous opportunity around it. I know that doesn't align with where you want to go, but I think there are clear opportunities in both of these areas to do this. On the policy front, realistically, you've got about a year before it is clear around what this committee is going to do. We've got to meet. The committee has to decide. We have to hear from the administration around how would it impact us to have two bodies that are focused on the same body of work? Um, I can tell you, um, that's gonna take some time to do. And so I'm not gonna be unrealistic here. The November thirteenth meeting that we have, Robin is gonna bring this and she's gonna take all the recommendations she's gotten from people from the district, make a recommendation to the committee. The committee will likely say, oh, I'd like to see this language here, bring it back next month after you get more information on this. And then that'll be about January. And then it has to go out. Once we have a version that we can live with, it has to go out for public comments. We will, y'all will then write all kind of public comments because we may not take all of your feedback. And then we'll have to decide what of your public comments we're gonna, we're gonna take, what are we not gonna take? Um, so I think the third thing you all can do is have advocacy. If you fundamentally believe that the charge of this committee needs to change, there are not, there are nine to ten board members who will ultimately make that decision. And so engaging with us individually, showing where the gaps are, if you think that CCAC is not, you know, living up to its responsibility, or you think that DIAB is, has a better opportunity to do that, there's a tremendous opportunity. I, I think if I were you in the next six, the, you know, in the next six months, that's where I would focus my energy in those three broad areas to be able to get this done. My final comments on this is your work is far from in vain. Had we never had this conversation, we wouldn't be moving the needle. Had you all not interrogated the, the inefficiencies, the inadequacies, we wouldn't be at this conversation. We wouldn't even be revising the policy. We wouldn't even be looking at if CCAC is meeting uh, the needs, uh, of parents and community members. So, um, I don't think that you revived something that was dead, essentially, and are trying to figure out how to, how to get it moving again. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if I overspoke, but th- those are my most recent comments.
Thank you, Dr. Mouse. So, um, it's almost seven thirty, so I'm gonna take these last three comments and then we're gonna move on with our agenda.
And Ms. Teresa, and anybody want to reach out to me one-on-one and talk, I'm happy to do it. I'll give you my cellphone number. Just talk to me one-on-one, or you can get it from Sharice. She's one of my parents who, you know, texts me and tell me what to do all the time. So, uh, you all can do the same.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Ms. Byrne?
Hi there, just sharing what I recall as some context for the relatively new or January post members of this committee in case it's helpful. Um, when all of us received or saw the call, right, to, to join and, um, uh, apply and submit your qualifications, et cetera, to serve on this committee, um, we all generally had questions once we were picked and at that first meeting, like, what is, what is the purpose? What is the scope? We see on this, you know, paper here that some of this language, but then we were told, well, this, this group hasn't convened, this recommendation came from twenty thirteen or whatever it was. So kind of, uh, I remember it was, um, Board Member Adam Stafford, I believe, who kind of initiated the revamping of this. And the spirit was, well, this can be, this is a renewal and this can be whatever you want it to be or think it to be. Um, and so we are not just being like hard-nosed and, um, wanting to get IDEA in here or five oh four or anything. All that we have been seeking is clarity and if, if we and, and, and guidance. And if we had had that guidance since September, that was actually that was actually, no, this is only ADA, this is only, uh, about ensuring that the buildings are ADA compliant. And then, then we would have said, okay, glad we have clarity on what we were actually called to and, you know, ap- apply to serve on because that, that clarity, there was no clarity. And instead, we were told to kind of make it what it will be. Um, and so that's why you have these questions. That's why you've had so many of us spending hours to try to make it. So again, it's not a matter of disregarding or being hard-nosed. It's a matter of a lack of guidance and clarity. And I'm thankful that we appear to be getting it now and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Ms. Vickery?
Yes, but, um, question is more so for Dr. Moss, so it's not a statement, more so a question. Um, in light of the, ha, 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 in light of the Capitol Buildings Project and things like that, how do you? You know, I was coming here. How do you suggest we move these recommendations around buildings, things like that? Forward, um, I'm thinking about District Eight, which I do represent, um, um, for the public. My child, I have one child that attends District Seven, but I publicly represent District Eight, um, where I live. Our biggest concern in District Eight is, uh, elevators. So how are we doing this when there is a hierarchy on the schools that are chosen to have changes?
Ms. Teresa, you want me to respond?
Yes.
Oh, I got you. Um, yeah, I mean, I, so I think that, one, CIP was a missed opportunity for this group. Had we known this focus, right, we just went through the CIP process and just sent that before the council for them to approve. Now, I will tell you, the council has not signed off on the CIP. Um, and so you do have a bit of an advocacy opportunity around that in places where it's not. But I, I will, I will be hard pressed to say if the district is aware of, you know, like fundamental ADA issues and it's not in the CIP, we, we need to know about those immediately so that they can be addressed. Um, and you need to let board members know, you know, like tomorrow, because the CIP is not complete. But I would say this committee could go through the CIP that just came out, right, the proposal that we have out, look at it and see if it addresses some of the issues or concerns that you all are hyper aware. That's my first reaction, but it has not been completely approved by the council yet. The CIP belongs to the council and not to the board. And I recently learned two weeks ago that the council can revise the CIP that we sent to them and never bring it back to district. Amy might, Amy's the expert on this because she worked on council side before. But, you know, Amy, you may want to jump in here, but there is an opportunity in that way. Amy, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I would just add, um, you know, I think that what, what, um, Felton said is absolutely true. The, the Prince George County Council can absolutely, um, revise the capital improvement program budget. The General Assembly also, you know, we have, as I'm sure you all know, we have billions of dollars more in needs than funding that we receive from the General Assembly every year. And so pushing these items forward, um, as importance from the General Assembly is, is key as well. Um, I was just looking, I think coming up on Wednesday, November fourth, is gonna be a CIP update around some of the, the current schools that are in process. And I was just trying to find that list and I, I just can't find it at this exact second in my email. Um, but you know, there are, there are regular meetings, I think, you know, making, making your voice heard, I think, as you all know, you know, the, the number of people who attend and speak at these meetings is relatively small. And so hearing numerous people speaking out in favor of, you know, ADA issues that we need to handle at our buildings is, is gonna have a pretty big impact.
Thank you, Board Member Moss and Board Member Olivia. I will say, just for the record, that the Disability Issues Advisory Board did give public comment for CIP. However, we gave the public comment, but to the point that Ms. Vickery made earlier, we still have concerns with access to data. So it'll be helpful that when we submit our requests, that we get responses because otherwise we're thinking about moving forward with the MPIA process.
Ms. Teresa.
Have to do that.
Ms. Teresa, let me help you real quick. Let me help you real quick. I know I may be a little out of order here, but if you submit your data request to Board Member Olivo or Board Member Brown, they can literally get the data that you want. So I, in the past, you may not have been able to get that data. Long as it's reasonable, your board members can request any data in the system and get it. Um, you know, Ms. Ms. Vickery, who I'm putting on the spot here, abuses the tracker. Um, she texts me and tells me to put something in the tracker so she can get a response. And so I don't know in the past how your liaisons work, but I know that these two liaisons use the tracker. So I just want to flag that you shouldn't have any issues getting data, long it's, it's data that can be given to the public.
So we'll work with our liaisons. I think that we have done a great job doing that. And we'll just figure out if it dropped off somewhere. Um, but that, I, I just wanted to make that comment as it relates to providing public comments. So we've, we've done it. And we, we will continue to advocate in whatever, um, forums are out there, um, according to the mission of this, this particular board. Ms. Doyle?
Thanks. Sorry, I'm probably too chatty tonight, but, um, Dr. Moss, you said something that was very interesting to me. You said you requested an audit of special education and it sounded like somebody told you no, and this might be a sidebar for another conversation, but I, I, you're right, special education is not underfunded in this county, but I cannot help but wonder what kind of waste, fraud and abuse is going on. Um, I've also said for a long time that they could simply provide services and reduce the compliance department and the, uh, legal budgets. Um, but I, I, I am very interested in, in that comment that you made. Again, it's a bit of a sidebar. Maybe not for tonight, maybe I should.
I can address it for you. It's Audit Committee. So I, I was very, uh, froggy when I first got here and I wanted to change the whole world overnight. Uh, and I had an item in the first board meeting and they were like, there's a way to get this done. And just so you know, Rachel, the Board Audit Committee, which is chaired by um, Dr. Anderful, has an audit plan that includes a special education audit, but we're having to run that in. I'm on that committee. We're having to do. I'm on that committee. We're having to do it in conjunction with the corrective action plan. So it's a bit of a wonky situation, but it is in the works. But I was too too um too froggy when I first got here and tried to put it on the agenda the first meeting, and that just wasn't the right way to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. And maybe to um Ms. Doyle, we can talk about it as a group um on how we could advocate in that regard. Because when Dr. Moss got put into his position, that wasn't the first time that an audit had been talked about. So it may just be something that we need to advocate for.
I think it's very necessary. I I don't have the numbers offhand, but the millions of those special education and the number of special education students, there's no reason we should be struggling like this.
Absolutely. Well, guys, I think we had robust discussion on this agenda item. I do thank Dr. Moss and Ms. Welsh for being here, but I do ask that you guys don't leave the meeting yet. Um because I do, yes, because I do have um a few items that's under new business that I I want to bring up. And it it falls under you all's purview. The next agenda item is related to bylaws, seven point three. Ms. Welsh, um you may have seen in this meeting that questions came up about, you know, what it is that we can and cannot do. And of course, we do rely on the politerium procedures, but this particular committee does not have bylaws. I have brought this up in the past. I know that there is another parent-led council that has bylaws. So my question is, is this an item that we could take up um with generating?
So uh PCCAC does have bylaws, and I believe I I have to look up that policy very quickly, but I'm pretty sure that policy says, within the policy, it says that PCCAC shall develop their uh bylaws. And then if there's ever changes, you have to go back to the board and check as a whole thing. So it would be something that if the if this if DIAB wants to have bylaws, that we could incorporate that into the policy.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you for that response. Um are there any questions about this agenda item? All right, here are none. Now we're moving into new business. Hold on one second, guys. Ms. Johnson, I have a question. Um we have an item on here related to the members that are listed for the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee. I think that we probably need to get with Ms. um Ms. Janey about about this before discussing it here.
Okay, so she sent in um an email because she um isn't able to be present tonight. And I believe she mentioned that she wanted to just get a confirmation of who was actually on the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee because she wants to schedule a meeting with her. So she just basically, if she had been here, I believe that she was gonna probably make a motion to ask who just a confirmation of who all is actually on the um Subcommittee. Because of that issue, we thought that there may be um a quorum. So she just wanted confirmation before she sends out communications to schedule a meeting with the members.
Okay, so for the record, Ms. Vickery, do you have um?
Send it later tonight.
Okay. All right, so we'll send Ms. Ms. Blackwell, if you could just let Ms. Janey know that we'll send the list of members for the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee.
Yes, I would do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Chair, it was last discussed um on our June ninth meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so I had a couple of items for new business that I would like to um just bring to this body for us to think about. I'm not ready to make a motion on any of these items. But I have been attending some of the um public forums that have e that have been led by our state senators as well as our interim superintendent. And I've just been hearing some of the comments that are coming forth. So the first thing, um I guess I wanted did want to ask, outside of what I noticed, if other members have been participating, what have been some of your observations? And if some of those items are applicable to the work that we're doing here. Um one thing, I don't know if the school district has a whistleblower reporting process specifically as it relates to special education and the staff. If there isn't one in place, I'm wondering, is this something that um we could propose that the district considers uh putting in place? It sounds like there is a concern with autonomy. It appears in some regard that there's a misunderstanding on what autonomy looks like for special education. I do know that there were recommendations made to our past superintendent in the past, and I brought this up with our interim superintendent, and it sounded like no changes were going to be made currently. But because this issue of autonomy keeps coming up, I'm wondering, do we need to reconsider uh how that looks? Another thing that came up is OIG. I heard in one meeting that there probably should be an OIG specifically for special education. Because our current one may only focus on the financial aspect. Um I did look at the last report that they did, and I think there was like, don't don't quote me on this, but I think there there was like a handful of complaints related to special education. But I don't know what that that process looks like as it relates to things being investigated. So I heard OIG specifically for special education. Um and then the last thing is related to Board Policy eighty one hundred. What did I do? I had my email up. This might be specific to you, Dr. Moss and Ms. Welsh. I had it up. I gotta bring it back up. I am concerned about a current recommendation that I see um in that in that particular was in the public climate phase right now, and it looks like that there was a new section added. My God, I don't have the section pointed out, but specifically, it states that the recommendation is to have two parent-led advisory bodies. The Parent and Community Advisory Council, which is governed by Board Policy fifteen hundred. No, my concern is related to the parent-led advisory uh council or advisory bodies, so PCCAC as well as DIAB. Because these councils have loan-served as vital structured channels for parent and community input, I'm concerned about the proposed language. And what it states is that at least one citizen's advisory committee and at least one special education issue, issues advisory committee. So reading that language is the intent to replace or restructure the two bodies that currently exist. All right, I see you shaking your head though, Ms. Welsh.
No, it's it's merely acknowledging them. That it speak that that policy is basically saying, this is what we have. We have this advisory committee, and we have this advisory committee. It doesn't, there's no, there's no attempt to change anything in either advisory committee. It's merely saying that the whole purpose of that policy is certainly lay out all the different types of committees that we have. So we have the standing committees, we have the advisory committees, we have uh the committee to evaluate the the superintendent. We have, which is now going to be an ad hoc committee. Uh we have um task force committees. So it's really sort of laying out committees. It was never to change anything within your the the DIAB or with um the PCCAC.
Okay, great. That's really good to hear.
But we will be reviewing and revising the parent advisory, the PCCAC. And the superintendent has wants to propose a whole new parent involvement policy for the upcoming year. So just flagging those for you, just as you think down the road. But Board Policy eighty one hundred is not an action-oriented policy. It's an acknowledgement of existing structures. So when you look at eighty one hundred, it acknowledges what structures and systems we have.
Okay, I don't think I saw DIAB there, so maybe that may be a comment that I need to to add. I think I saw PCCAC, and I think I understood CCAC is being defined, so we might need to.
Just send your comments in, though, because that'll be helpful. We're in the discussions phase of that policy.
Okay, great. Ms. Vickery?
Chair Smith, I didn't want to interrupt. I just had my hand up for new business.
That was the, no, that was the last item for me.
Got you. Um you asked a question, um Chair Smith, about who has been attending those meetings. I have also been attending several meetings around the county. One of the ones that um I got to attend, especially with you on a Saturday and um my friend that's here next to me now was the special education meeting, yes, Dr. Moss issue. Um sorry, it's his student. You are a student, be quiet. Um was around special education. And the thing that came up um that concerned me and I I want for us, for DIAB, if we could take this up throughout this year. And then for our guests who are able, who are here tonight, if you guys can think about it and take it back to your different committees and things. You're good. Um committees that you're um in charge of is we're lacking a client relationship management system, a CRM. We tend to use dashboards in the county a lot, like spreadsheets and things like that, and I just don't understand why y'all don't have a CRM. Um especially when it comes to um intake of new special ed cases. In healthcare, we use it. You could use it from at the eight hundred number for a child fine, but also it can be used internally to input data. So you can track from the time that a parent has requested a five oh four plan or IEP meeting all the way up to implementation. It'll be red if it's not done. It'll be green if it was done, yellow if you're waiting. Um and I just don't understand why I don't have it. Um I'd love for us to have this D um as DIAB for us to look into this and and bring it forward. It could also be used around accessibility. It could be used for um employment, things like that. And I I just don't understand why I don't have it. Healthcare has figured it out with PHI. Y'all could figure it out. Like, we use them all over the place, and and it's it's really bothersome to me um that that's not present.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. Ms. Welsh, did you have um additional comment?
I I do. I wanted to, in relation to two of your comments, one had to do with OIG or Office of Inspector General. I'm thinking you're saying of education, OIGE, uh you had asked about, do they ever, is there one for special education? So there is, the state has the Office of Inspector General for Education, but this not, it does not just investigate financial types of things, you know, or or procurement, things like that. It it'll investigate anything that's related to spec to education, which uh special education falls under the realm of education. So as far as if you, you can always have sent a complaint to them, and they will look into it and investigate. They investigate wi wide variety of topics within the world of education. So uh and special education could fall under that too. As well as, you know, MSD also does have a whole, uh you can file complaints with MSD, and they will investigate those complaints also. And then the other thing, I thought you were talking about whistleblowing blower. Do we have a policy or anything? So we do have um a a a policy and an administrative procedure. It is um the the um the policy is Policy zero one zero nine, and the administrative procedure is twenty two hundred. And it's called Financial Imp propriety, Improper Conduct, and Whistleblower Protection. And under the definition of improper conduct, that's like anything that's improper. So any, you know, any, and many, many things fall under the world of improper. And then it, in both the policy and the procedure, there's a whole section about whistleblower protection and not being able to retaliate against any anyone who does file a complaint um because of misconduct.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for enlightening me on that.
Okay.
Ms. Vickery, did you still have your hand up?
It's for a new topic because we did say we were gonna come back to my questions that I found that we were pending from the construction subcommittee.
Okay, Mr. uh Dr. Moss?
Yeah, I I do need to to be able to head out here. Um my mom, my mom had surgery, so I'm actually back home taking care of my mom. But I wanted to say two things that I looked up real quick to your to your point. Um I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but a quick query, I found that Board Member Olivo and Board Member Brown both submitted data requests for you all. And it looks like those might be pending because of legal reasons or whatnot. So I just want you all to know that I did do a query. Should have told you all I was looking at y'all's stuff, but I did. I just wanted that I didn't want the world to think that they're not doing their jobs. Um and on your last point, uh I'm gonna say this publicly before a great cloud of witnesses. Um the school district does not need another Office of Integrity and Compliance or anything like that. We have, the legislature gave us a new office to investigate things and didn't give us an extra money for it. So the district spends an extra two million dollars a year funding an office that recoups about a hundred thousand dollars a year uh in funds. So um I'd like us to work within the existing structures to find fraud, waste, and abuse. But I just wanted to say that in front of a great cloud of witnesses.
All right, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Teresa. Call me if you need something too.
Sure thing. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Ms. Vickery?
In the interest of time, as soon as we're at seven fifty-three, I I would like to ask Mr. Blackson if you can please uh work with Ms. Bowman to uh get the list of outstanding questions that we've had um from the Subcommittee and so that we can get some answers. Some of them surrounded, how many elevator operators do we have that can fix elevators? Um we were looking, oh, we needed some information and responses back around. Sorry, I'm just scanning just so that we can have a little bit of record. Different things surrounding wheelchairs, um access to elevators, key cards, things like that. And and specifically around um some of the maintenance of these items, Mr. Blackson. Um so if we can really uh get some answers to that, that would be really great. We have some identified people on that spreadsheet who are supposed to provide us some answers, um like Mr. Jason Washington, Ms. Newell, Mr. Matlock, uh Ms. Walker. There's several people that are identified. Um but I am not seeing where we ever received a PG CPS response from those.
And um um Ms. Vickery, does Ms. Bowman already have those specific questions already? Okay, okay. So uh I took some notes, and I can make reference to that particular document and get that clarity based on uh is it primarily around the functioning or operation of elevators, the location of elevators?
Title of the document is Questions Related to New School Construction and Building Accessibility. New School Construction and Building Accessibility. And Board Members Olivo and Brown, I can forward this to you guys. Um this was pending from our April meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. Is there any additional new business? Hearing none.
One last thing, um sorry, just scanning for my minute meetings, uh our meeting minutes. Did we ever get response back about a DIAB retreat? At the time, you and Chair Blackwell were gonna take it offline and come back. Just wanted to know if we're responsive. If not, um I can ask a question in our November meeting.
So I know if my memory serves me correctly, we took a motion, the motion passed under this body to have a retreat. As far as next steps, it has been dormant. Um I know that um Ms. Blackwell and myself have not met with anybody. Um I know one of the recommend, we had several recommendations about a place that we could possibly hold this at. So allow me to uh take this offline and have a discussion with Ms. Brown and Ms. Olivia on the best way to, I guess, execute this um before end of the school year. Ms. Blackwell?
I did mention of a place that would be uh centrally located for everyone from the Beltway, be enough bathrooms, and it's a nice location. I'm just reading feedback from the Um, I'm just reading feedback from the committee, what they decide.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. Ms. Johnson, I don't see where I um solicit for a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm kind of.
No, you don't, you don't solicit, you just um adjourn the meeting. Yeah.
I got it. Okay, yeah. The chair would like to inform the public that the next meeting of the Disability Issues Advisory Board is scheduled for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please continue to visit the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting details and any updates. Thank you all for your val- valuable contributions this evening. We had very fruitful discussion, guys. To our viewers, thank you for watching and for your continued support. There be no further business. The time is now seven fifty-eight PM in the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Meeting of the Disability Issues Advisory Board is hereby adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.